So, let's see, it's six. Go ahead and call the meeting into order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to my flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as one.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. To approve the agenda, I have one change to add. A two M gambling permit for off-site gambling for the Manaville Restoration Association. And H one rental agreement for fire hall conference and kitchen for discussion. Do you have anything, Brian? Paul?
Nope.
No.
Okay. With that, I'll take a... Oh, do you have anything else, Tim?
Nope.
With that, I'll take a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Thank you, Ryan. We have a motion to... We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Everything was in your packet. Do you have any questions for Tim on that? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mel. We have a motion to... We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Next up is Visitors to the Council. We have the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Bradley Peterson with the firm of Flaherty and Hood in St. Paul, and we act as the lobbyists and sort of organizational management for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. And with me, I have Mayor Steve King from Austin and Emma Nelson, who is part of our staff and handles a lot of the logistical items for the Coalition. So, again, very excited to be out here to talk a little bit about the CGMC, what we do, and how we work with cities like Cassin. And so, let's just jump right into the next slide here. A little bit about just the Coalition. Very big picture. We have more than 100 cities outside of the seven-county metro area in every corner of the state, really focusing on a limited set of issues areas at the legislature. It's local government aid and property taxes, environment and energy, which is mostly water and wastewater and infrastructure, funding and regulation, economic development, transportation, annexation and land use, and then we do some work around labor and employment. And then, in the last couple of years, we've done a lot of work on the EMS issue, and we're very involved in the money that went out last year to providers, the 24 million that went out to EMS providers, mostly again in rural Minnesota. And we try to focus really on those things that will help our communities thrive. What is it that you need in order to build a great community from the state? On the economic development front, we've delved into not only sort of core economic development things, but we've taken on as part of that housing issues as well as childcare. And so, we've been very involved in those discussions at the legislature as well. So, a pretty broad set of issues, but also, in a lot of ways, very, very focused. Next slide. So, the CGMC really is sort of Greater Minnesota local government's voice at the Capitol. There are a lot of policy discussions going on at the legislature, not so much this year, but under normal circumstances. And there are a lot of resources that the metro area brings to the fore. There is Minneapolis and St. Paul, they've got their lobbyists. The metro city organizations, they have their lobbyists. The municipal legislative commission, which is essentially the rich suburbs, they have their lobbyists. The Met Council, they have their lobbyists. And so, when we look at the atmosphere, it's really CGMC that's sort of on the other side of that advocating for communities like Cassin. And so, we're a constant presence at the Capitol. There's pictures of myself and my colleague Lou testifying on some issues, especially relating to housing and capital investment. And, next slide. As we build our agenda, we really are a member-driven organization. So, we work with our cities and our members in the fall to determine what are the specifics of the things that we want to work on. We go out and we visit with our communities during the summer and fall on an individual basis or regional meetings and really sort of get a sense for what are the issues that are important to you. And it's through meetings like that that we got engaged in things like childcare and got engaged with the EMS issue because it was brought to the fore by our members. And our members are involved in every step of the way, from the working on policy committees to sort of help identify what it is that we want to work on, all the way through helping us lobby and testify at the legislature. So, it really is, I think, a pretty strong partnership throughout the whole cycle. We also do have a number of other resources at our disposal in terms of services and support. We really pride ourselves on doing a lot of really strong research and analysis. We've got a full-time policy analyst analyst who basically, what I say is, he's the guy who does all the math in the office. And so, when we're looking at like the LGA formula and tweaking those dials and tweaking those levers, he's able to work with the formula and under different scenarios figure out what does it mean for our member cities. And as we were talking earlier, I was telling the mayor, we spent a lot of time in the '22 and '23 legislative sessions on the changes that were made to the LGA formula and the $80 million increase that went in there. And as we're making those changes and as we're looking at the various inputs into that formula, we're evaluating, how does it work for each one of our member cities? We're looking line by line by line by line to see how our member cities do and if it makes sense or not. We also do a lot of work around environmental regulatory issues from a legal perspective, both legal and administrative. And so, we have a couple of environmental attorneys on staff who are looking at what are the regulations that are coming out, what are the rulemaking at MPCA that we need to participate in. And so, we've got a separate fund that we've kind of set up over the last couple of years to help with those issues. And when we need to sue the state, we sue the state over those issues. We also help individual cities if they've got a particular case that has wide-ranging impacts. We help them fund their legal work so that they can have a fighting chance against MPCA. And so, we've gone all the way as far as courts of appeals and won for our communities. And so, that's something that is part of the services. And then, we're also starting to, and we're just on the sort of beginning edge of this, we're seeing with all the labor and employment stuff that came down for cities, especially in the last couple of years. We have, in our firm, labor and employment attorneys who work with cities. And so, we're also doing that same type of work in terms of participating in rulemaking, participating in administrative proceedings to make sure that cities are getting the best shake they can in terms of their role as an employer. So, we're in a lot of spaces. We bring a lot of expertise to the issues, whether it's at the legislature or at the state agencies. So, another slide. So, you can kind of see here just our team at the Capitol, and this, I think, highlights that. We, I think, are really blessed with a pretty experienced team. I've been doing this since, worked since 2007, and it really focused on LGA and capital investment and economic development. Liz Wafel is our expert on environment and annexation and land use. Eric Simonson is a former legislator. So, he kind of knows the ins and outs of how things sort of work in absolute practicality there. Darryl Dannen is a former DEED staffer. And so, all of the grant programs and such that cities rely on, she knows those in and out. Marty Seifert, former lobbyist or former legislator, he was minority leader for the House Republicans. Derek is our policy analyst. Darren is our transportation specialist. Shane also works on transportation and other issue. And then, Alex and Emma do kind of the support work in terms of media communications, event planning, all of that. So, we've got a pretty strong team that we bring to the Capitol. Next. So, a little bit about this year and just what kind of we're working on. And then, in a minute, I'll turn it over to Mayor King to talk a little bit from his perspective. So, really, just given kind of where things are at in the legislature, our message for them this year is just focus on the basics. First off, you need to pass a bonding bill. You didn't get it done last year. You needed to. You didn't make that a priority. Property tax relief through LGA, continuing to talk about how important that is. And then, otherwise, fund programs that have broad appeal and reach. So, the childcare programs that help communities build out their childcare capacity, the other grant programs that cities rely on through DEED, make sure that those are strong. And really, just kind of focus on the basics. Narrow the agenda. Don't get distracted by proposals that have no chance of passage. We saw a lot of that, I think, last year at the legislature. That's one of the reasons why I think the bonding bill did not pass at the end because they were too focused on too many other things. And then, work from the perspective of statewide benefit rather than partisan priorities. We are a nonpartisan organization. We've got cities in every corner of the state except for the metro. And so, really feel that maintaining a nonpartisan stance is pretty important. Next. And so, just a little bit about what's going on at the Capitol. As I'm sure, we were talking earlier, you've all been following the news. The House of Representatives is, at this moment, non-functioning, which is why it was actually great to be here and see you guys wing through your consent agenda pretty efficiently. That sort of thing is not happening, unfortunately, in St. Paul right now. And so, the election left us with 67-67, but there's been legal challenges to a couple of the seats. We're down a member, and so, it's 67-66. The DFL is not coming into work. They're boycotting the proceedings to prevent the GOP from controlling the chamber. Supreme Court is hearing arguments on the whole thing tomorrow. That may lend some clarity to the proceedings, but it also may not. And really, I think it is going to be incumbent on, once they have the special election, to fill this one open seat, which will probably be sometime in early March. At that point, one way or another, they are going to have to get together and do their work. And I do think eventually they will. What I don't know and what I can't really predict is what the resolution that gets us from here to there is going to be. I think I'd be foolish to even try to guess what makes it all come together. On the Senate side, they're actually functioning pretty nicely. They're currently also tied 33-33 with one open seat because of the passing of a senator from Minneapolis. That special election here is next week. They'll fill that ostensibly. The DFL will win that seat, and they'll be back to 34-33. But the Senate is functioning pretty well as a body. Sort of other dynamics this year. We've got a very tight budget situation. We don't have the surplus that we did two years ago of 17 or 18 billion dollars. They're looking at 600 or 700 million dollars. There'll be another forecast that comes out here at the end of February, March, and that's when they'll really start to get to work on the budget. So, not a lot of resources. Things are pretty constrained. Things are pretty divided at the legislature even once they get to full strength. And so, obviously, CGMC is going to be there every step of the way, making sure that the perspectives of our cities are represented there at the legislature. And so, it's a good news, bad news situation with the division and with the tight sort of situation that they're in. The good news is, it'll be difficult for them to get things done. I think the last two years, we actually saw them, in many ways, doing too many things. And there was a lot that landed on cities in terms of regulations and the like. But then, the bad news is, it'll be difficult to get things done. They do need to come up with a state budget before the end of June. And again, like I said, we'd like to see them pass a bonding bill. So, before we take any questions or anything like that, I'd like to invite Mayor King up to just talk a little bit about CGMC from his perspective as a member.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I think I'm... Make no bones about it, I'm here to help encourage you folks to become members of the city of CGMC. And I think I come to it with some decent level of experience as a three-term council member, 12 years of paying attention certainly, but at a different level than I have been, had to, as mayor now for four years. And thanks for Tim reminding me that I'm now in my second term, but just barely squeaked that last election. But as a council member, yeah, of course, you're paying attention. You need to support a family. You support your department heads. Mayor is a little different level. And when I became mayor, it really dawned on me that I need to become more involved in Coalition, in Southeast League of Minnesota municipalities, things like that. And what it does for me is make me a better mayor, make our city council a better council. The level of involvement that you can get involved with is not lost on me. You know, the CGMC helped us get through a pretty tough bonding bill with our $100 million wastewater treatment plant in order to get 20 million. It was like pushing water uphill, and they were very, very, very helpful. Got an opportunity to testify, got an opportunity to speak at press conferences. Those are the kind of things that really move the needle. And I think, and we mentioned it earlier, certainly, there's a fee to join, but certainly, more members in the pool always helps. But the city of Austin, there is one line item that we just don't even look at, and it's our CGMC membership. That is just going to be a given year after year. Because of the level of credibility that these folks bring to the Capitol, the relationships that they build at the Capitol are all for us in the Greater Minnesota area. To watch Bradley and the staff work and how they have formed those relationships, I witnessed that maybe at last winter's conference. Bradley certainly respectfully challenged Governor Walz, face-to-face, on some issues. So, they're not afraid of getting in and getting dirty, but for the benefit of us that are out in the Greater Minnesota area. It certainly is a metro and rural divide. It's out there. And the folks that Bradley mentioned that have the lobbyists for these larger cities, they get the ear. But the CGMC is certainly looking out for us out in Greater Minnesota City. We cannot live without them. Again, the support that they give us and the level of involvement that you get to participate in is just game-changing.
Thank you. So, maybe just a couple of... One more slide, I think, of some particulars. More opportunities to engage with CGMC. We're doing a CGMC 101 webinar that is for non-member cities or folks in those cities that are members that maybe have not been as engaged in CGMC. The registration's open for that. We've got our Legislative Action Day coming up in February, where we bring folks to the Capitol. We brief you on the issues, then we send you out to lobby. Coming up, we'll be at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference. We typically do a breakfast there with our members. Our summer conference is going to be in Bemidji. And then, there's a number of ways you can follow us on social media, et cetera. And then, with that, I think the only other thing is, if you've got any questions, add our contact info. So, happy to answer any questions that you've got. As Mayor King said, we really would like you to consider joining CGMC here going forward so that you can be a part of the work that we're all trying to do.
I have a couple of questions for you. So, how much staff do you have? You know, how many members?
Oh, how many members?
Well, no, your staff first.
Yeah. So, you saw basically everyone on that slide who was doing as part of the lobbying team in our office, who are all, in some ways, participating in CGMC stuff, not necessarily full-time. We do have other lobbying clients. My time there was pretty much full-time on CGMC. Elizabeth, who you saw, who does the environment and kind of some of our housing stuff, she's almost full-time on CGMC. And then, the firm itself, we do legal work. So, in total, the resources that we bring to bear that can be available, we've got 32, 33 firm members doing municipal law, labor and employment, regulatory, environmental things, other services that we offer to cities for a few, but they're available as well, so.
And then, you were saying with the legal, what kind of price does that give the cities if they're a member? Is there a discount for that? And is it a...
Yeah. There is a discount. I'm trying to think here. I mean, it's probably 25 to 30 percent off of the sort of what we would charge non-members for legal services. And again, like I said, we do quite a bit of work for any number of cities, both CGMC members and non-members on the labor and employment front, negotiations, employee issues, you name it.
Sure. And then, you were talking about water and wastewater. How involved are you with the state getting... Right now, the state is starting a school over in Riverland for wastewater and water treatment that Southeast Minnesota League was working on. Are you guys involved with that? Or do you know anything more with that?
So, say the issue again, I'm sorry.
There was never, there was never a class down in Southeast Minnesota to train water and wastewater? And now, there's a school starting up at Riverland?
Yep.
And I didn't know how much of you guys were... If you had other cities that had interest in it, or if it was just...
Yeah, no, I think it's an issue that's facing a lot of our cities. Those kind of professional services, I mean, it's across the board with any kind of licenser-type things is really a critical need in our communities. And so, we've been very supportive of efforts like that because we see it every day where it's really difficult for cities to recruit those types of specialists, absolutely.
Because I know the classroom should be starting up here, maybe next session or next school year.
Sure.
But I just didn't know. It's been kind of an uphill battle with the state trying to get it done and the transfer of money through DEED, so.
Yeah, we're very engaged on any number of issues like that.
Do you have high hopes or any hopes for the EMS bill getting a fair shake this time?
Yeah. So, EMS has been, I think, an interesting issue in that, you know, I think, a couple of years ago, it's been a problem for decades. But it only kind of rose to kind of the top of the pile in terms of the legislature's priorities in the last couple of years. And that's kind of also when we got involved. I spent, actually, a big part of my day today was talking EMS issues with legislators. And so, I think that we're putting together a bill working with the Minnesota Ambulance Association that would hopefully provide a more permanent funding source for EMS providers. And so, I'm hopeful that something will happen because there is sort of a bipartisan understanding that this is an issue that something needs to be done on. We've kind of let it erode for too long, and we're in a critical situation, whether it's funding, whether it's staffing, whether it's the age of the equipment itself. So, I am hopeful that this year, once the legislature gets their own act together, that EMS will be one of the issues that we're able to make some progress on.
If I could just add something regarding that too. It's important to know that the legislative initiatives that CGMC moves forward with the legislature all come from their board and the staff and people in Greater Minnesota. So, emergency ambulance service is certainly an issue, wastewater is an issue. All these things are issues, but the how they move that forward comes from the Greater Minnesota cities. So, that membership is important, too, to get your, whatever issue you may have. And I know you're not alone. You have neighboring cities or cities up north that have similar issues. So, I think it's important to know that there is a board of folks that are from within the Greater Minnesota, you know, cities that create that legislative initiative that Bradley and staff move forward.
Anything else?
Well, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much again. We do hope that you'll consider it, and we'll certainly be following up. And really appreciate the opportunity to be here and hope you have a good rest of your meeting. Thank you very much.
Thanks, folks. Thank you.
Up next, we got the mayor's report. I got one thing I want to bring up. Every year, you guys know, in the spring, we do our four-hour training going through our planning for the year. And that's something you will learn about, Brian. We're tentatively looking at Saturday, March 1st, was it? And my goal this year is to, it'd be the 8 to noon or less, but I'd like to see if we could do it at the fire hall this year. Just to check the place out and have a different spot to do the location. So, if you guys want to look in your calendars and see if that works. Let us know. Next, public forum. I have no cards. Public hearing, there is none. All business. So, in G1, we have pricing from the Post Bulletin versus DCI.
Tim, I did get a chance to look at that.
Sure. So, I'll just preface it, and then maybe I'll let the city attorney talk about it a little bit. As requested, including your packet, you have information related to requests from the council member for just seeing comparison of costs. As the city clerk reviewed it, we found the costs are relatively comparable. So, they're within a dollar or two. As to the other components of that, maybe I'll let the city attorney talk to that issue.
It does appear as though the statute, as long as the DCI is a qualified newspaper, it does have priority pursuant to statute because it is located in this locality. So, I would agree with that. I think you'd have trouble switching that.
I mean, subdivision six, and you mentioned that, Councilmember Christensen, you know, there is the exception designated priority. I'm not sure, if you look at number two under there, that it hits that 75 percent criteria. And then, number three, the newspaper has provided regular coverage of proceedings. I'm not sure that that could be something you could argue that the PB has actually done. Not saying the DCI necessarily does a great job of that either. But so, at the end of the day, it's up to the council. Whatever decision you make is very supportable. But I think that, to echo what the city attorney said, I think that kind of gives me some guidance.
Ryan, one of the things, I mean, we chatted briefly before the meeting about that exception. Subsection, well, subdivision six, subsection three says "and" at the end. So, all of those criteria do have to be met before.
I was just looking at subsection 1A. This is into where it must meet the following criteria to be qualified newspaper. Does that mean it has to do all of those?
Which one are you referencing, Ryan?
This is statute 331A0271AJ. I'm on that. I'm on the... I'm on the League of Minnesota Cities, qualified newspapers. Underneath the first five bullet points, it says the newspaper must meet the following criteria to be qualified newspaper. Does it have to meet all of those requirements or just one? Being within city limits?
All. Look at the actual text of the statute as opposed to the league summary.
Okay. This is more of just an ethics thing for me. I don't feel that they are behaving ethically, and I don't want... I don't feel we should associate ourselves with unethical behavior. I just don't think it's appropriate. I think we have better resources out there. Although we do have a local paper, I don't feel that they are putting the time and effort into accurately cover our citizens, our city, and the cities around us. So, I felt like it would be bad to look and see if there are better options for us. We, in the last year, I have yet to see the paper here at a meeting, the DCI. I have seen the Post Bulletin here. So, it'd just be nice to see a face to that company. And we had that with their previous owner. It'd be nice to see that that paper put more time into its city if it has to be our only paper of choice. But it's a moot point if we can't, based on the information provided. So, that's fair. I appreciate everyone taking the time to look into it, though. Thank you. So, we leave it as the DCI, as we approved the last meeting?
You know, it's up to the council, but I mean, I appreciate Councilmember Christensen's views, and I think there are a number of people in town who would probably share that same consideration, especially anyone who's been working for the school. I feel like some of those folks probably feel like they've been under attack a little bit. But based on what I'm seeing here, it probably makes sense for us to keep it in that way.
I would rather not have to spend any money on legal.
Right.
If we do change, so it's just easier not to. I can do more digging later if I need to. Yeah. It'd be nice to see them be more ethical. All right. Well, we will leave it with what we approved the last meeting. Thanks, everybody, for checking into it. We will keep it on the radar. Okay, new business. We added rental agreement for fire hall conference room and kitchen.
So, I've had a couple of folks who've asked me about this. We've had a lot of people calling. I think Linda's taken a couple of calls, and I know I have two. So, he asked the fire department to come up with some rules, kind of had a guidance for them. They've sort of selected their own. Uh, they've sort of selected their own, uh, set of, of guidance here, so this is coming from the fire department. Uh, so if there's changes you want to make, that's certainly something the council is to set the rules on this. Um, a couple of things there, you know, the, the cost, obviously, of the, the rental, the time slots, you know, those sorts of things are things that the, uh, you know, the council can look at. I know some folks have said, "Well, you know, why is there a cost?" Well, there is a cost for cleaning the facility, there is some of those, those, those things that be associated with it. Um, you know, I think the cost may be a little higher than I, I anticipated, um, but, um, you know, we're just here for your feedback today, and, you know, not only to make a decision tonight on it, uh, we do want to have something promulgated for the folks in the public who are able to rent it then, um, you know, as soon as we can. Appreciate, uh, Joe getting this, uh, worked out here. So, I think right now, we're planning on booking it, um, from City Hall. Now, that's been sort of going, going back and forth with the fire department on that, too, but I think, for the time being at least, it makes the most sense for us to, uh, to have a good idea of, uh, who's going to be renting when they are, making sure they can get keys and that sort of thing properly. We have the, we have the staff here at City Hall to handle that better, I think. Um, so with that, I'm going to leave it to you for any discussion.
Well, as I brought up for our meeting for the city, I foresee that the fire department should not be charging the city at all to be using it for our meeting, but I, so, that I do want them to know.
Sure.
But I have a hard time paying $400 for a four-hour meeting room, or when the public decided and approved that we should build a fire hall with a conference room for meetings, and that was a whole part of this. I, if it costs $400 to clean it, then we're in trouble. Aye. You know, yes, there's a little electricity, but again, the public paid for this building, the public approved this, it was, so, my opinion is this price has, definitely has to come down, or you're not going to have anybody rent it, and that's not, that's not the goal. We put that in there as a public service.
And cleanup is required in number eight, so why would you pay $400 to clean it yourself?
Right.
If, if, if the, I know there's a cost to rent, but if it's really $400 to rent, and it's, the majority of that is to clean up, and you're required to clean up on your own, you're, does that money go back to you for cleaning it?
Yeah, I mean, as I said, this isn't something that I necessarily created, so I can't speak all the specifics, so that's a good question I can ask about. You know, when I reviewed the, some of the other city facilities and other communities, you know, cleaning is typically one of those costs, just because you may clean it to the level you felt it was cleaned, doesn't necessarily mean that the fire department feels that it was cleaned appropriately. So, I mean, that's, we run into that with, uh, the park shelters, for example. You know, like, you ride the park shelter in the morning, somebody else ride in the afternoon, they might be upset, "Well, you know, I thought it looked good." Uh, my wife will tell me sometimes, you know, we have a little disagreement about what's clean and what isn't clean, too, but, um, so, I mean, when I look at it, I mean, you know, there is the time related to that, there's time, you know, the facility, heating, cooling, those sort of costs, that there is some cost to it. I would agree with, with Dan, I think that the cost probably should be lower.
But, and, do, does the library charge for their meeting rooms?
No. Um, they do charge, um, folks who are not nonpro- I think they only rent it to nonprofit groups typically.
Are you, I'm, I'm not sure they, do they charge? Because I thought it was a donation.
They don't charge, because they only let nonprofits use it.
Right.
Right.
And it has to be during their open hours.
Sure.
You can't rent it on a weekend, or go in.
Right. So, for instance, when you see the donations from, like, the Dulcimer Club to the library, that's in part because they use the community room?
Sure, in lieu of a, in lieu of a charge, maybe.
Sure.
And it's, it's free will, the library does not set their fees.
Even, I see they got Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays, you can rent it for $50 an hour. That's okay.
Is that in addition to the, uh?
No.
Additional out, oh, yeah, you're right.
Okay, you're saying, yeah.
But you could rent it on Tuesday, Wednes-
During the week, it's relatively cost effective, yeah.
But...
Is that because they meet on certain days of the week?
Monday night.
Yeah, Monday night.
Monday, Monday wouldn't be available, because that's when they're regularly-
Yeah, which is fair.
And I'm, that is kind of odd that they're only charging $50 an hour for meetings, but $400 for four hours.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know, you know, part of what we talked about when we proposed the fire hall in the first place was that that room would be available as a community room, um, because we did have, and I had a lot of seniors come up to me and say they were supporting this because they wanted to be able to use this community room as a senior gathering facility for cards and coffee or whatever.
Well, I know part of it, too, you know, they do have the kitchen there. If you're there to bu- use the meeting space and you didn't use the kitchen, I could see a one price, because you're going to have to clean up, maybe a little more if you use the kitchen, but I think we're going to need different pricing if you just want to use the room for a me- a card meeting, you know?
Um, but we, we also talked about having it available because of the, the setup of the place. Um, I know we had some public works meeting that was held at the library within the last couple of years.
Sure, there was a sewer training, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, because there were trucks from every municipality in southeastern Minnesota at the library. That was kind of, this, this was one of the things that we thought we could put at the fire hall.
Absolutely.
And make a good use of it, so.
Yeah, and I mean, I think to your point about the senior focus, I mean, one of the issues there is, like, structure. Like, so, I mean, if there's a structured senior group, I think that we, we would take a different look at this, too, because I, I think that if we had a relationship with a group like that, that said, "Yep, we're going to use it Tuesday mornings from, you know, nine to 12," or something like that, I think we would look at something other than this potentially, if it was reoccurring. I think the main focus of this, my own perspective, is that it's mostly for, like, parties.
Right.
So, so you're right, you know, because I absolutely agree that, I think, one of the selling points for some folks in town at least was additional space they could use for sort of things like that.
Well, and I talked to some people that are, like, in the softball clubs, and there's, where they can't get space at school, or, and they're renting space that's not sufficient for them, but they, how do you, I, I can't see charging $400 for a sporting cl- club to, to have a meeting, that's, you know? And that was part of it, that was why a lot of them actually voted for it, when they were, talked to me about it, because they were in favor of where they could have a meeting and not have, and have a space big enough.
The school does charge outside groups to use their space. I cannot remember what the rate is, but, um, and it obviously depends on which space they're renting. Um, but it's, it's based on custodial fees, or having to have a custodian on duty-
Yeah.
-for the duration of the event.
Sure.
Largely in the performing arts center is what I'm familiar with.
With so many of our fees and permits, we've tried to lower them to just cover the costs of work time.
Mm-hmm.
And cost of paper, and cost of filing. To me, this is one of those areas where we don't need to make money on a community center that the taxpayer's already paying for.
Right.
And personally, $400 for four hours seems like you're trying to make money or trying to avoid having people want to use that space. Um, so I think the 400 is-
Kind of hit the point there a little bit.
Yeah, I think 400 is-
I'll go one step further and actually say that, because this is voted on by the public, we could take losses on this, like we do with the pool.
It's a service.
Right? Like, even if, even if it costs us act more to clean it than what we get in rent.
Yep. I think, you know, it'd be a good point. My concern would be damage, like, so maybe, you know, you're looking at, maybe you're looking at more of a damage deposit and a smaller fee. Because that'd be, I mean, because, you know, it doesn't take much for something to get damaged, like in the kitchen, or a table, or, you know?
Yes.
I mean, and I'm not saying people will do that on purpose, but things happen, children running around, people calling up, whatever. That would be my concern, is making sure that we, we're keeping the space, but to your point, Paul, I, I mean, it, it is a service to our community, absolutely.
So could we have another, a deposit for-
Already is.
It has a deposit, but it says you have to pay in full. Right? Rent, full rental paid, full rental must be paid in full to secure reservation. Could we do a damage deposit instead, and then, if it is damaged, that, just like when we rent the pool office?
With the council permission, what I like to do is, I'd like to promulgate some different numbers, and maybe bring that back to you, and see if it's more agreeable. Like I said, it's, it's kind of, you know, some of the numbers I was looking at were different from what the fire department's looking at, and at the end of the day, you know, you guys make the rules with that. I think, you know, Lynn and I can take another look at it, and maybe come up with something, something else there. It, it sounds like that's kind of the feedback I'm getting right now.
And I have two more for you.
Sure.
They're saying no alcohol, but yet they want us to issue them temporary permits to serve alcohol.
Yeah, and then with another issue I was going to bring up is the, is the alcohol prohibited on premises.
And...
So that was, that was another point.
Okay, and then the other one I got, it says nowhere near the fire truck area, fireman, isn't that a secured area, locked off from the room?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Supposed to be, yeah.
I think, you know, this is now, one thing to keep in mind is, this is the guidance they're giving someone. So it's more of a reminder there.
Okay, okay.
To, you know, that you're not-
But I just see that as-
If the door was on, for some reason was left open, you're still not supposed to go in there. I think that's more of a reminder for those folks.
But if it was left open, that's, and people went in there, I'm sorry, but, yes, people shouldn't go in there, but you, the fireman should have been more-
Well, I'm not arguing that part, I'm just saying, I think by giving them this, you're saying, "Hey, you know, you're not supposed to."
I know, but-
It's absolutely not supposed to, so.
The paper is not going to stop somebody. You should have secured doors.
But I mean, if you, we asked the fire department to write this.
Yes.
Therefore, obviously, they're going to write something that is most favorable to their interests, because that's what they're representing.
Yes.
And you can't kind of fault them for that, so.
Okay.
I, I agree, we-
So, the question about the new alcohol on the premises, I guess, what are your thoughts on that? I mean, we do allow alcohol in our parks, in the shelters, um, and I guess, to me, I think that's a similar kind of a, a thing.
Yeah. I mean, people have to be responsible, I mean, whether you have alcohol there at home or out.
I mean, the, the police department is right across the street, they will have a squad ready if the party is going a little late, you know?
Hold on, but didn't we have a wine tasting at?
It can't, if you, if you rented that room, you couldn't sell alcohol.
Right.
You could serve it.
See?
But you couldn't sell.
So just like here, you can't sell it, but you can bring your own.
Right.
This doesn't-
So if you're having a card game and you wanted to have a cocktail.
But this doesn't say that. This says you cannot bring alcohol on the premises.
Right, that's what I'm saying, and that's why I have-
That's what I'm talking about, I think possibly need to change that, yeah.
I, I think we should give the staff permission to go back and look at different numbers and work with the fire department and then give us more-
I think, you know, maybe Lynn and I will give a whack at it, and then bring it back to you, and then if you have further changes, then, then we can give it to the fire department, maybe.
Perfect.
That might be the best way to go about it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Those are the things, I identified with cost, alcohol. Is there anything else on here that you have questions about?
Uh, the cancellation has a $50 admin fee. Is that what they're saying, is the typical admin fee to fill out and rent the space? So it's fully funded minus a $50 administrative fee.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, that's what they think the admin fee is. I think they probably charge, because it's similar to the pool we talked about last night.
Yeah.
Is that somebody else isn't going to get, use that space, then.
Yeah.
You know, and that would be a, a loss there. Um, you know, same thing with our park shelters, you know, some of those fees are not returned to you if you, if you're taking that space up.
Just so that it's kind of consistent and congruent with other fees that we do charge. That'd be fair. If there's a $50 admin fee to rent the park, and it's the same for, for this?
Because, yeah, they want 50% of your refund and a $50 admin fee.
Well-
Well, that's if you're, after 30 days, within 30 days, or before 30 days, it's a little-
But they also reserve the right to cancel reservations if the space is needed for fire department activities, so.
And I think that would be-
And I understand that, but-
But then they'd have to give you full money back.
Yeah.
And that just needs to be clarified.
And more than, and they'd have to give you a 30-day notice, if we have to have a 30-day notice.
Yeah, you know, I, I guess I can't speak to the fire department, I mean, if it was an emergency, I think they would-
Well, that's different.
Take precedent, obviously. Um, and, you know, we're not going to, it's not like they're going to be able to bump you out and then use it for their own, you know, party or something like that. I agree with that.
And I wasn't thinking party, I was thinking more if, if, I mean, the training calendar is pretty well set in advance, they know what they're doing, so that shouldn't be a problem.
Well, and they've told us that, you know, if someone calls, they need as much notice as possible, and that's, my intention would be provide the fire department as much notice as possible, so that they can integrate that into their calendar.
Sure.
Because if they tell us, "Hey, that doesn't work, if the data doesn't work," that's what we have to tell the folks, just like if somebody already has the pool reserved, you know, "It's reserved. I'm sorry, you know, we may not like it, but it is kind of how it is, so."
Did you say, did you say that City Hall would be in charge of scheduling, then?
Um, at this time, yes, I think that'd be what we'd like to do.
So you would have a calendar that has all the fire department's meetings already in it, so that, that could be, okay, available for anybody looking to rent it?
Yeah. And I guess we, I, you know, one thing we talked about, I've talked with staff a little bit, is we use MyRec for scheduling, like, at the pool. It's possible that we could even utilize some of that survey, you know, information, we might be able to put it up on our website, so that people could actually see, you know, I'm not sure if that's going to be able to be done, but that's one thing we're kind of evaluating, so. All right, well, that's all I've got on that, so, lots of stuff to chew on.
Well, I have- Come to start with.
I have one more thing, Tim.
Sure, Brian.
Um, it mentions any damage caused by me or my members of my party will cause forfeiture of my deposit, but it doesn't mention a deposit anywhere in here.
Sure, I think they're considering that $400 is rent to be your deposit.
But that's not really a deposit, if that's what they're charging for-
I don't disagree with you, you know, and the, the, one of the versions I had worked out, I had a rental fee and I had a deposit fee, and they were separate, and I think that's something I'll probably look to bring back into this, just because I think it's more clear than.
Sure.
Well, we got to start somewhere.
Well, it's a good start. So, well, I mean, my goal would have, I mean, it may even be before our next meeting, I'll plan to have something sent out to you, um, so you can review it. As you know, you know, we don't make any decisions that way, but, um, just so you can see it, informationally speaking, and, and if you do have feedback, you know, always remember to blind card me back, that's how we, you know, we'd want to avoid any of those over meeting concerns.
Perfect.
Right. Thank you, everybody. Next, we have our administrators' report.
Work over to that here. Um, while we talked a lot about the legislature, or the folks from the coalition talked about this morning, so it is definitely a, uh, it's not going anywhere real quick. So, I won't belabor that, because, uh, yeah, I think, I, I don't know where that'll go. For us, fortunately, you know, we're not as dependent on it this year, we have our bonding bill project that, um, was approved, we had a good meeting with the DNR today. Um, I think that one is, and maybe, uh, Brandon will talk about it, but I think we're really close to having a pot, potential, you know, our agreements ready for that, so that might be starting on schedule. Um, we had our CMPAS meeting, uh, we evaluated the CEO, um, you know, we had a good meeting there, they're fully staffed now, they have a new manager for, uh, finance, and, and, uh, so she's doing a good job, and, um, you know, we're, we're moving forward with some projects here on the electric side. Uh, one of those projects, as you know, we have the capacity issue, last year Jay was here and talked about that, or, um, we've been going back and forth, and Compass has been going back and forth on diesel versus other options. Right now, we're leaning, um, starting to lean more heavily towards battery storage, um, because it, you know, there's some issues that you avoid with having the diesels. You know, there's a, the state of Minnesota has a lot of environmental regulations, and it's becoming even more so. Um, so a lot of the other cities in the Compass group, um, have older diesels. The modern diesels are much more efficient, they're much cleaner than the 1960s and 70s, The modern diesels are much more efficient, they're much cleaner than the 1960s and 70s, and some of those are still running. But we're starting to lean towards the battery technology, which it's a little different. It may not last quite as long in terms of, but for us, most of our outages in Cassin are four hours or less. That's typically, you know, we might see an hour outage typically for the length of it, and so we think that that'll still provide us that capacity. It'll remove some of the environmental concerns that people have with diesel being situated, and then it'll actually give us that capacity credit we would need for the auctions. That market, as many of you know, is becoming more and more unstable with the data center's demand. Capacity costs are rapidly accelerating, so we want to have a resolution there relatively quickly. P&amp;Z had a good training last week. I think it was informational for that, it was good, it's always good to refresh that, talking about, you know, how to make decisions and kind of that decision pyramid, you know, legislative, quasi-judicial, and then administrative. I think it was good. We have some newer members on that board. We had Sheldon Turtleson's back on the board, which is good. He's got some institutional knowledge, too, so it was a good meeting. We'll have some more action for them at the next, I think we have a preliminary plat and a final plat in February for them. Governor Walz's budget proposal, I've reviewed that in a large, to a large degree. It's kind of a status quo budget for him with the recognition that there's, the state's budget situation is deteriorating in terms of their fund balance and reserves. They are looking at a small change in the sales tax, although it's going to cover a lot more items, and so it's kind of a coin flip, like you reduce it slightly, but you also increase the number of items the sale tax covers, so it's actually looking at about $108 million increase, and with their forecasting $108 million increase in revenues off of that. So, anyway, priority setting, it's something we typically do in January. I know I mentioned a couple of things in there. We've had fire hall, Highway 57, housing stock, water tower replacements. You know, if you can get me any new priorities you have, you know, we'll try to collate those and kind of bring that back as a document, and maybe even have it, I think probably for the work session in March. It's always good to go over that. You know, we have a lot of projects this year, so this year, I think largely is, we've got, we've got enough to do with the street projects, the water tower, the stormwater projects, a lot of, a lot of good things going. EDA, we had a good meeting there as well. Ian was out of the office, so I got to present his information. We had a good talk about Smoke and Silverback. We looked for a facade grant approval for them, and that's been a good thing, and so anyway, at the end of the day, the, you know, the EDA's got some good things coming, too. So, I've got a couple of other things in here, just the Ready Strategic Plan. We're participating in Ready, and I want to try and get as much value from them as we can, so you can kind of see what they're seeing as some of the foundational issues in our region, just what they're looking at, what they're talking about, and we're going to try and utilize their services a little more this year with the rev, the rev team and bringing some speakers to Cassin to talk about different economic development issues. So, with that, if there's any questions for me, I'd be glad to take those now.
Hey, Tim. Up next, we got our engineers' report.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Three items tonight, the DNR Trail Grant, Southwest Reconstruction, inner south water tower and booster station, so I'll just go through those in order. Number one there, DNR Trail Grant, for the new council members, I guess, we, big background, we got some funding to build a couple trails. Specifically, this letter has to do with the one up in Northwest, coming from our trail system up in Northwest in Prairieland Park to run a trail to the north, and then the developer to the north has committed to building a trail in its phase of their subdivision, and ultimately connecting that into 16th Street Trail. So, we got some DNR grant money to build that trail. So, this is the letter that says the RGU, the city of Cassin, does not, does not require to do an EAW or EIS because it does not meet thresholds as part of the state statutes. If you get into a state statute, it covers everything from nuclear power plants to wastewater treatment plants to large residential developments. It does include trails, but it's trails 25 miles or longer, so obviously we're not at that threshold. So, asking for your review and approval of this letter, so Tim can sign it and send it on as part of our environmental documentation that's needed for DNR Trail Grant, so. Any questions, happy to answer. May I motion to approve the letter?
So, I will look for a motion to approve the letter.
Oh, motion?
Thank you, Mel. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose.
All right, thank you. Easy enough. Second item, maybe a little more, a little more, more information here. Southwest Reconstruction, again, high-level background. We secured a bonding bill, $5 million in bonding bill. It's for this project and also the other flood control project that we're looking at doing, we're looking at doing that separately. And also ultimately paying for part of that. We did a feasibility report, had special assessment, had some meetings with those property owners. We've obviously been designing and have the plan set here tonight to review and potentially approve a resolution authorizing bids. Staff has reviewed this. We sat down, went through things, we had a utility design meeting with the local telephone company, gas company, et cetera, so we're looking at kind of wrapping this up and getting some sort of approval. What are we looking at? It's a full reconstruction, be very similar like our third, fourth, and fifth project I know some council members are, have been a part of. Ultimately, going to be a full reconstruction of the roadway, sewer, water, storm sewer, add subdrain behind the back of the curb. We ultimately have a stormwater pond, because this was funded through the idea or the notion that we were going to reduce our flooding, so we've added a stormwater pond because it is being partially paid by the state bonding bill there. That's of note. Sidewalk, we are completing the sidewalk along Second Avenue. That's the north-south run that goes from the brewery off of County 34 and the trail that goes to our parks there. There's a couple little houses that don't have sidewalk there. We're looking at reconstructing that through its entirety to the south there to have at least one sidewalk corridor for the neighborhood. And then I think it was a recommendation from Councilmember Johnson to have one block east to the Casey sidewalks. We do have one on Fifth Street on the north side of the road to connect in the sidewalk that Casey's put in, so if you lived in the neighborhood, you could get to that sidewalk and then get to Casey's and then get to 57 and be served by those businesses, so that's of note. We're also adding a cul-de-sac by the apartments on Sixth Street there. We do have a cul-de-sac, we have some parkland there, so putting a cul-de-sac in there so we can turn our plows around. That was a request from Public Works, so I'd note that. We are also increasing the size of our sanitary sewer. Our sewer service is mainly to the south and the west, west of our cemetery, kind of falls off and drains. We'll need a lift station over there if we're going to add a large service area over there, so we have sized that larger so we could accept that lift station long-term sewer planning. The bigger pipe, all the cost is digging up, adding a bigger pipe doesn't cost as much, so we thought it was a good idea to increase that size so we could accommodate that. May not happen in our lifetimes, but I think it's a good thing to put in if the pipe's going to last 100 years, so we added that. We do have a phasing plan in there, and then we do have some restrictions. I mean, we're tearing up neighborhoods, it doesn't happen overnight. This is going to be a, probably a full-year project, but we do have a requirement in there, same requirement in third, fourth, and fifth. Once you start in the phase, you continually work in that phase and tell us a gravel road. Get all the utilities in, get the road partially rebuilt, get a gravel road, get people access back into their house in order to continue in future phases. We feel that's been kind of the best of both worlds, right? We can't restrict the contractor too much, but we also got to get people into their homes, and I think with the phasing plan, you'll only be one block from your house, so we'll just have to work it out during construction. We have some commercial businesses there that may help out for getting people close to the, close to their home as we can, but digging a 15-foot deep trench right in front of your house is problematic, so. Not worthwhile for third, fourth, and fifth, it's an inconvenience, no doubt, but we'll just work through it in construction. We'll have a full-time construction observer during construction, utility updates, meeting updates, we had weekly, actually had two of them. We did third, fourth, and fifth, and a contact and a cell phone for observer and do the best we can, so. That's the highlights of the plans. I'm not planning on going through the plans unless you'd like to. And I mean, I'll pause there, see if any questions. And there's a resolution, here, I'll just jump into the resolution to, or the improvements, we'll be bidding that, bidding that on the 20th, I believe. Yeah, 20th there, and then I'll be back before your council meeting on the 26th for consideration to enter into contract to continue it. So, with that said, I'll pause and answer any questions you may have, and again, consideration of the resolution to authorize bids, bring those bids back here in about six weeks.
You said you'll have an email set up for everybody, if they give it to you?
Yeah, we, we set up email lists, served last, last time we did third, fourth, and fifth. Mindout handled 57, they do as much as we thought maybe that we would like to, or we would have if it would have been a city street, but I thought it worked well, so then we had, at the time Tyler from our office, our constructor, he sent out weekly emails and updates on where they're at, where they're, what they're planning in the weeks coming ahead, and then we had a meeting at 10 o'clock, like every Tuesday, and then like 6 o'clock every Tuesday to meet with property owners. And once we kind of got in the swing and we were sending meeting updates, there was really less attendance or port attendance towards the end because everybody was updated and we're all to speed, but there was some good attendance at the start. But, yeah, we do our best to, you know, assign somebody to be the point of contact, and I always say, I'm not the point of contact, and your councilor's not the point of contact, you're welcome to call them, but I'll tell the council to have them call our observer. Construction, things change, it rains, we chase contractors around all summer, not knowing where they're at or what they're doing, so it's a struggle, but again, if we have that point of contact, we find it to be very helpful. And then once we start working on your street, we stay there until you can get into your driveway and have that road partially rebuilt. We'll have to close down again, we pour concrete, pour your driveway apron, et cetera, and then the pave, but if they're working there continuously, we find that property owners are real, you know, understanding of what the process is, because it's ugly.
It's an inconvenience.
Yeah, absolutely. We throw a bomb in there, pour everything up, and rebuild it all. It takes a while, so it's, it's a process, so. Yeah, that's all included in our project, assuming we obviously move forward, but we got to go out for bids before we can get a contractor on board. We are a little early in the bidding season, just a little sidebar, a little, little early because we want to, it's a little bit of a bigger projects, we want to make sure some of our smaller contractors are able to do this, who will take them, you know, a full year, so we just, just kind of want to get it going, get it out here, get it going soon, because we do have the assessments on the back end before we actually get into construction, too, that we, before we actually award the project, so that takes a little more time.
Can you remind me what the estimate was for this project?
5.7 million.
Okay, and are you expecting this year to be a very competitive bidding environment?
Uh, yeah, it's going to be, going to be a pretty good, or I guess your perspective, it's going to be a pretty tough bidding environment. We're going to talk about the next project, about even finding contractors to work on stuff. Another reason to probably get this, get this on the streets sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Also, alone in the city of Cassin, we got like $12 million worth of projects this year, it's pretty sizable.
Any more questions for Brandon? If not, I'd take a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Paul. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mel. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. Okay, there you go, Brandon.
All right, perfect. One down, very similarly, same process, just a different project here. Again, I'll provide some background. You see on the title sheet there, kind of lays out the city. We have very poor water pressure inflow south of Highway 14, so it kind of came to a head when Egan Companies did their last phase, did a hydrant test to see what their sprinkler looked like, and we said, hey, we really don't have a lot of water back here. It's been kind of sounding the alarm and said, well, we're going to have to do something. It was kind of on our radar, or maybe more on the back burner than where it's at today. So, we, I guess, Egan ultimately got conditional approval of their building permit through our fire chief and the state fire marshal, with the understanding, I think it was even a formal letter from the city, that we would work on getting a booster station and water tower constructed as soon as possible. I know Mayor McKernan has made a comment about building two water towers, and I think it went last three years, so I told him, actually, Dan Agler's on the plan now as the mayor, so it changed a little bit, so it'll be an Agler Tower, not a McKernan Tower, but, yeah, so we...
The Bold Tower.
So, we...
McKernan Tower? I don't know if Chris will like that.
So, we did a report, and obviously, construction plans here. We finalized the construction plans, are finalizing their stamp preliminary, but we're ready to rock on our side of things. We've met with utility companies and worked through it with staff. Although, maybe walk through this plan a little more, because it's a little smaller and more unique than just a reconstruction of a neighborhood. So, Sheet 2 and 3 there are some details that we have. Some of those are city of Cassin, we worked with Public Works, just general details on how we construct stuff. Sheet 4 there, that should look familiar, we're sitting in that, in that photo there, that's City Hall there, so we're going to have the blue line there is a water line, that's going to be the suction line that we're going to suction from the low side of the current water zone, and then to the upper right there, the parking lot just outside the door here, we're going to have a booster station. It's going to have three pumps in it, that's going to pump due south across Highway 14, that'll be on Sheet, where are we at here? Sheet 5 shows that water line, and then we're connecting an existing line that goes underneath Highway 14, so all of that water pressure, that water, the water in that line will be at a higher pressure than the stuff that we currently have, and then that'll pressurize everything south of Highway 14. And then we will have a tower, that tower is shown on Sheet 6 there. That's within the easement that Egan granted to us, and then they looped the water line through and stubbed one out for us, so we're going to run a new water line and a new water tower, and that water tower will be higher than our other water level, which creates pressure, so we'll have that flowing pressure on the south side of Highway 14, so that'll be the dividing zone of the two, two pressure zones. That's somewhat common, I think Rockstrad's, I don't know if they have like 13 different pressure zones, they have a lot more topography and obviously bigger system, so not uncommon to have these, these sort of systems, because we're at a higher elevation as we go south away from the creek, obviously. And then Sheet 7 there, should look familiar, that's the same kind of schematic and paint job that we have on the other two towers that are functioning, other than our historic one there, so we're planning on painting them all the same. Like Sheet 7 laying out the tower. Sheet 8 there shows that booster station, show the piping there and some pumps to pump up to that higher zone, and then 9 there shows that we're going to match exterior building appearance of City Hall, match kind of the colors in the stone there of the building, that's on Sheet 9. Sheet 10, just more detailing of how all the pumps are going to tie together with all the pipings. 11 is a footing detail, and 12 is electrical schematic for the pump house, so a little more of an interesting project. We do have a, the other thing I should note, as we pump to the higher level, we have a catastrophic failure, our big fire in our southern zone, our bigger, larger zone north of Highway 14, that water system can drain back and provide water to the lower zone, but it's generally going to stand alone and be pumped up to the tower, and then the southern tower's going to serve everything south that way, 14, and only drain back if we need an emergency situation, so. Pause there, any questions? Again, there's a, I won't pause there, I'll keep going. There is, again, a resolution to approve plans in order and go out to bid for the project, and again, same timeline, we'll bid at the same day, on the 20th of February, have it back in the council, back at the 26th for consideration entering a contract. The other thing I would note, we were planning on constructing this and having this up and running by fall of next year. Talked to every tower contractor that I've talked to, including the one that built the last one, says they're full of work for next year, so I bumped out the completion date to fall of '26. I know we wanted to get it built soon, but we just don't have a contractor that are full of work, so I'll let fire chief know that that's our schedule. We could get this booster station up and running in the interim and maybe could do something with operations. I know the fire chief has said, he knows that there's low pressure out there, if there's a fire, he knows what to do, they have protocol, so we just may have to be living with, you know, a fire system up there that we don't necessarily care for.
Use their tankers.
Yep, so they drop tanks and whatnot, so.
Did you talk to Public Works on your boosters, so they know what's going on with those, as far as your pumps and...
Yeah, yep, we sat down. And one other item to note, we are going to have an emergency generator there, so if power goes down, natural gas generator will come up and continue pumping into that zone. Public Works now has portable generators, that is an option, they're getting another portable, and then we have the backups with the other pumps. If we're in a storm, we thought that that was appropriate to put a emergency generator because we have not only the other wells we have to pump, but then also the sewer backup pumps that we, you know, have a bypass pumping, that bypass pumping plan that was more of a robust Public Works in a time of emergency, so that was kind of talked about at staff, just as a little side note, a detail of the project, so.
In regards to that, so these pumps are providing, they're just there to provide more pressure to the southern zone, so if, if they do lose power, won't they still have pressure from the water tower till it drains down?
Yep.
Do we really need to have a dedicated generator there? Like, if we know we're going to be out of power longer than what it takes to drain down that water tower, can't they just bring a portable instead of installing an entire generator just for the pump house?
Well, we could.
Or is it not very expensive? I mean, if this is relatively cheap thing to do.
Yeah, it's probably a hundred thousand dollar generator.
A little overkill.
The discussion was, all the times are already, from a Public Works standpoint, to go to the other wells, to if the sewer's, you know, close to being backed up, we have, I think there's five different spots that we bypass pump from, and then what about the lift, what about the big lift station that pumps up to the treatment plant? So, that was the discussion of continually adding portable generators to the different spots in town, is it's certainly become problematic with respect to staffing during...
Yeah, well, it seems to me that those locations would be more suited for a fixed generator than having a portable one, and having a portable one here.
Portable one here.
Because they're more important, like, we can still operate without these pumps running because we're doing it today. Like, we may not be at the pressure we'd like to be, so this generator almost doesn't, it seems nice, but is it worth a hundred thousand dollars to have it there?
If you expand that south side of town with more residents, that tower's going to go down faster, so this would benefit in the long run. If you start building more homes over there, and that tower's going to go down fast.
Yeah, I understand, like, how fast are we talking, though, like?
Depends on how many homes and businesses you build. So, you run a plan for the future, so if you do it now, it's 100 grand. If you all of a sudden realize four or five years down the road, you still have to do it, it could be 150, 200,000.
It'll, it would probably pump three times a day, so as you slowly run out and drink water, or a fire.
So, you get six to eight hours on the water tower before it needs to be refilled?
Yep, that'd be about right.
Okay, but in an emergency, we could let it drain down more.
Well, then you lose prob, I mean, hopefully you don't have a fire.
The pressure starts going down, right?
And that's just normal operation, if you're, you know, if you've got a catastrophic fire over there, well, then you're going to need those pumps because you'll be able to suck that tower down in a few hours. Again, depending on the usage, so.
Okay. I see we've got three pumps in here, so they're just running constantly, and I assume this is designed that one will be down and it'll still be adequate.
Yep.
What about two?
Nope, it's only one down.
Okay, we can handle one down, if two go down, we're just on water tower until we get a new pump to put in?
Yep, it'd be the same conversation if you didn't have power out. And since you asked a question, one other thing, too, is when the tower's in service, these are set up to run off VFDs, so they change the variable speed on how much they pump. So they're set up to run and keep a constant pressure. That's easier said than done, but it is in there to keep that pressure in there, so as water's being consumed on the south side with the tower shut off, and not part of the system, it's made to keep good pressure in the system.
I see these are three-phase pumps, which isn't surprising. Do we have to do any infrastructure changes to get the three-phase to the pump house?
Nope, the electrical is nice three-phase, pump electric right there on the north property line here.
Oh, it's already right there?
Yep.
Perfect, okay.
So electric apartments ready to rock.
All right, good.
Any other questions for Brandon? If not, I'd take a motion.
Make the motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Ryan. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, suppose. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Brian.
Go ahead.
Next, on personnel.
I did have one thing I was going to mention during my report, and I forgot. It's related to personnel, police chief's here tonight, he's requested that he'd like to add another officer to the department. So he's asked that he'd be able to put that out for a, I don't know, how you want to say, not solicitation of an officer, but you could speak to it a little bit, Josh.
So this is still replacing officer that we never filled in the past, so it's not adding on to the department, so it'd be to post it on the post website to start hiring.
So if you're just replacing, you're just filling a empty spot?
Correct.
How many would that bring it to total?
What do we budget for, for this year?
Well, so, I mean, that is, I mean, it's an empty spot that was created but not filled.
Right.
So that is something that, you know, we'd have to take a look at in next year's budget if it were to be filled during this year. It would, you know, I don't know what the total cost, each officer's, depends on if they get family healthcare or not, but you're looking between a hundred and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars probably of cost for an officer.
Which we haven't budgeted for this year because we didn't fill that role, correct?
Well, I mean, you know, I think that in the budget changes last year, that position probably would be something that would be kind of a half, you know, it would, you know, you'd hit your budget number for this year, and then we'd probably have to increase it because of the wage increases and all the other things to next year's budget. So you'd see an increase in the police budget in twenty twenty-five, or twenty-six, rather.
But do we have, we have money available to pay for this individual?
Yeah, I'd say so, yeah. I mean, like I said, once again, healthcare is, it's, there's a very big amount of variation because, you know, between family coverage and single, you'd see a big, you know, you might see a twenty thousand dollar difference in a cost of a year. So you might, you know, if they had a family and they wanted to, you know, if they had a family coverage, it could potentially go over on that. It's hard for us to predict that. It's one of the reasons we have the reserves we do, is to cover in the short term those shortfalls. But, I mean, I think that, you know, if the council wants to add another officer, the big key for us would be then the reduction in the overtime budget.
Right.
So last year, we budgeted thirty thousand dollars for overtime in the department, they actually had fifty-seven thousand dollars of overtime. So a lot of that overtime money would be hopefully going towards this officer's, you know, regular salary instead of overtime. So I mean, I can't tell you what would be a claim for that, I don't know, but I mean, it would be, there'd be some of that give in the budget that way.
The thing is, is right, so if we add somebody in and we cut back on overtime, is that something that the department wants? Would they prefer to work less overtime, or do they like the extra pay of getting overtime? Because it's a kind of a give or take, like, some people like the constant overtime, and some people are like, I wish I had more time at home.
It depends on the generation, too. The younger officers don't want the overtime, so it's usually just a couple of officers that are covering this overtime. Last year, they were starting to get burnt out, but we were really short last year.
Well, I don't want, we definitely don't want anybody burnt out, so, not in this role.
How much lower were your calls last year compared to the year before? How many fewer calls did you guys go on?
It was almost the same.
It was at the end? It was like every month it went down when we compared it to previous years.
I can't compare it just, you, two years together. If you go back ten years, we had, we're at two thousand calls. We're now about five thousand, we're four to five thousand a year, so.
Okay. Trying to remember the last report I saw.
And ten years ago, we had about fifteen officers, we used to have five or six part-timers.
Yep.
So that's what we used in the past to cover vacation and sick time?
Plus part-time. You're not going to find that anymore.
No.
It doesn't exist anymore because of the licensing requirements, right?
Yeah, so the licensing for that ended in twenty fourteen, a part-time license.
That's why we lost Scott Larson, huh?
He was not a police officer.
I know.
Sorry.
Well, I mean, if it's in the budget, I don't see a problem moving forward, I don't know what the rest of the council-
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Under attorney.
We need to, we just, you need to redirect to him to post it. I mean, we'll see how long it takes or what kind of applicants you get. You know, Josh, I guess just let us know, how long are you planning on posting it?
I'm going to post it, so it's probably, had applications due by March. There's a large class in the skills program at RCTC right now, they have about forty-five students, so I'm hoping to get somebody made from that class, and they'll graduate like end of June, so maybe July is my goal to have somebody hired and do their training during the summer.
Do you know what time of day they'd be working, what shift?
I don't know. When they start off, they'll be on all three shifts.
Under attorney, you have a question for us?
I do have a question about the resolution approving the sale of land that was on the consent agenda, that one to the Dodge County Housing Trust Fund.
A two K?
Yeah. The request for council action indicates the purchase price is fifty thousand with fifty thousand in assessments, and I just had a question about that. I see the resolution that's below that doesn't, doesn't say anything about the fifty in assess, so I just wanted clarification whether that was, the assessments were in lieu of a fifty thousand dollar payment at the purchase or at closing, or if that is in addition to, and should that-
Assessments would be in addition to.
So can that be included in that resolution, then, that the sale is part of fifty thousand plus fifty thousand in assessments and other good and valuable considerations?
I mean, if someone wanted to make a motion amending, then I think that'd be fine.
I'll make that motion.
If you feel it's appropriate, yeah.
I recommend that.
We have a motion to add the fifty thousand dollar assessment in to the resolution.
Second.
Second, Brian, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, suppose. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, thank you, Dan.
And then, we have correspondence. You got any questions for Tim or on that?
Or Sarah.
Or Sarah.
She's working hard on the audit, so we've got audit meeting next week, the fifth.
They're always fun.
And then, if there's none, we have our roundtable discussion, and that's if you just have any questions or concerns.
Oh, it's our first.
And we will have no action taken on it, it's just more of a informational only. And I do have one that I'd like to bring up. Earlier, I brought up about the wastewater water treatment. The Southeast Minnesota League had worked, we've got approval through the state funding, it'll be run through DED. And DED had to, because it was a new course, had to make up a whole new form, and it had to get approval from federal and state, so that's why it took so long for this classroom to be starting. So they've got that all approved, so hopefully that'll be a class starting in Austin shortly.
So this'll be something that our guys can go do to get leveled up, or to-
Or leveled up, or-
Have people in the area-
People in the area that don't want to drive all the way to another state or way up in the cities for training that can now go nearby for training, and then you got a better chance of hiring.
Yeah.
And then that will be, the lady from Riverland will be at the meeting next Thursday at the Legion for the Southeast League, and she'll have a lot more information, and they are looking for members of the water, wastewater divisions to be on advisory board, so they make sure they're training the right stuff.
You know, I must add one thing to that, we got to recruit our young people to get into that profession. I understand the program in Ely closed down because nobody was in it, and the bigger one that used to crank out wastewater operators in Saint Cloud had very low students attending that, so. To create programs, great, but we got to recruit people to get into that field because a lot of those operators are retiring, retired contract operators.
Maybe you should work with the school and go to that presentation.
And that was part of, that was part of the reason-
I did for other engineering stuff, yeah.
That's part of the reason why the Southeast League took this on a few years ago to have, is to get it local, because the people didn't, didn't want to do it or couldn't afford to go there and house themselves, where, you know, people can stay at home or nearby with friends.
It's a good profession to get into, too, so.
Yeah, and I know there's somebody actually looking in nearby community that's eighteen years old that wants to get in, but ain't sure, but now this classroom's nearby, that might help. I don't know if anybody else has anything?
Small question, the difference between the folks that came to present to us tonight and the league?
Yes.
Well, I mean, you saw their presentation, I think their focus is solely on folks who are in the outstate, and that'd be the biggest difference. The League of Minnesota Cities has a lot of different interests that come into play, even on the board. You know, it's pretty much split between metro cities and outstate cities, so I think that would be, if Bradley was going to say, what their biggest difference was, is they don't represent anybody in the metro.
Right. And what's the cost, was there, what was the cost?
The rate sheet is in your bracket.
It's like three thousand for the first year, and it ramps up to like twelve.
And then every, every time you grow in population, your price goes up. And it's similar to, you know, but like the Southeast Minnesota League of Municipalities is also a grassroots organization that does the same thing. The taxpayers' burden on that one, granted, there's a lot less staff, is fifty dollars a year. They do similar, but then, and they work with the greater Minnesota, they work together on certain things, so it's just-
It also seems a lot more focused on lobbying efforts than perhaps what I'm aware of from the league.
The league has a pretty robust lobbying group, but they just have so many different things.
Okay.
That I would say they're, I mean, they might have a similar sized staff, but it's spread over seven hundred and seventy cities instead of-
Hundred.
Well, four hundred cities, or whatever the, I mean, we get a lot of the benefits of the GCACM right now without having to pay for it, so that is something that we consider, so.
Because, yeah, you'd have to look at it, it's taxpayer money.
Sure.
I had a couple of things. First is a small thing, can we look into getting microphones for every chair here at this desk? Just, it seems we're missing like three of them, and we always have audience members saying we need to speak up, and we're sharing microphones. It just seems weird that we've got like all these seats and we don't have enough microphones for everybody.
Two.
Well, we got an empty seat today, but, right, because Linda's doesn't have one, Mel doesn't have one, and, yeah, so.
Yeah, we can sure check into that.
It seems odd, especially since, you know, this is getting recorded, so if you watch the videos on YouTube, the people who don't have microphones are hard to hear.
There's no plug-in over here for another one?
Well, it would, you would have to expand, but we'd have to look at the cost and whether our system can take it.
Seems a small thing that maybe when we put them in, we didn't have as many seats filled or something, and so. And I know the audience, usually when we have public hearings, everybody's always saying speak up, so we need to have a microphone, I think, for everybody speaking.
We could check on that.
And then, I was curious, a while back in this, this may have been covered and I forgot, the gravel pit was asking us for approval to expand, and I think we said, yeah, sure, as long as you make an agreement with the county. Is that, is that where it's been left, or did that go forward? I don't know that it ever came back to us, I'm curious what happened with that.
Yeah, so we said we were concerned about the reclamation and the viability of that, and I think the direction of the council was, we were open to that if it was, you know, a safe place when, you know, all the gravel is extracted, right, long-term. So then I think the proprietor came back, and I was pretty much non-responsive, or said didn't know much about the project, so we threw it back to the county, we said, county, go take care of it, because they didn't, they didn't even acknowledge the fact that they were even working on this, was what I heard from staff.
Well, I mean, the council was not interested in annexation, because they felt like there wasn't, cost benefit wasn't there. So the county had to, I mean, it's a county issue. They were looking at illegal action against the develop, you know, the gravel pit, and I don't know, I don't know where that sits.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything back on that. We had to turn it back over to the county for their zoning staff to take care of.
Okay, yeah, okay, that's what I thought, I just wondered if that made any progress, because it sounded like, you know, hey, we wanted to use this space, and we were like, well, you have no real contracts in place to fix it up.
I think originally what they were looking for is, they were looking for us to annex them in, because then they'd be looking, they'd be working at permitting at our level instead of my level.
I remember, we could watch that.
And based on the feedback we got from their engineers and Brandon's review, it seemed